Good evening, residents of Everett, Washington. I'd like to call to order the city council meeting of October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. For information on council meetings and how to participate, please visit everettwang.gov/citycouncil. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mayor Franklin.
Excused.
Councilmember Bader.
Here.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Vogely.
Here.
Councilmember Fosse.
Here.
Councilmember Tui.
Here.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Here.
President Schwab.
Here. And this time, I'd like to ask Councilmember Ryan to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand up your able.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
Thank you. Just before we proceed, we have a request from staff to remove Consent Item Three, and that will be placed on the consent item in a future agenda. Maybe next week is the goal.
President Schwab.
Oh, I apologize. I'm just ready to get this thing going here, huh? All right. With no disrespect, I would ask Councilmember Fosse to read the land acknowledgement.
The city council wishes to acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Hopes People and their successors, the Telaleb tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on, and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more just and equitable society.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we'll go on to old business. Do I hear motion approved the minutes for October eighth, two thousand and twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely.
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse.
Yes.
Councilmember Tui.
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes. Okay, we'll move straight to public comments, which includes written comment acknowledgement. Under our rules, written or spoken comments, persons submitting must provide their name of residence to be made part of the official council records. So, good evening, Angie. We start with written record. Do we have any?
Yes. Good evening, President Schwab. We have some written comments that I'll read. We received the following comments about buffer zones from John Hall, Jerry Dawson, Holly Burkett, Poland, Craig Scottle, Quinn David, and then from Karen Nelson. We received a comment about Fred Meyer closure, and these were all submitted to council, legal, city clerk, and administration to be part of the record. And then we have some individuals here in the chambers. So I will start with Karen. If you could please come to the podium, followed by Mary. And if you could please press the button on the mic and then state your full name, city, residence, and you have three minutes to speak.
Okay, thank you. My name is Karen Nelson, and I have lived in Everett for fifty-eight years. Mayor Franklin, who isn't here, and Everett City Council members, I am here this evening to give input on the closure of Evergreen Way Fred Meyers. I am asking you to protect our citizens, especially the economically disadvantaged and elderly population who this will impact the most. I have shopped at Fred Meyers for years and live in with the mile of the store. I see the single parents push their babies in strollers to obtain food, clothing, and prescriptions. I have empathy for these families because I was a child in one of those families when my mom was left to raise six children on her own, not having worked in twelve years. So I know this struggles. It is resourceful and proactive to provide free bus for six months for those impacted. But how about in the cold, dark months of winter, when a struggling parent has to load up four children and navigate the bus system? And when elderly residents are out of prescriptions and they have to travel further to get their medicine? I was at Safeway today, and it was the longest line I ever saw, a mile from Fred Meyers. It is easy for executives at Kroger to make these decisions from their corporate offices when they don't feel the pain in their everyday life. Fred Meyer is one-stop shopping, and that is what is necessary in this area. Most important, I am asking you to take a stand and file an immediate emergency injunction to stop the closure of this store. I have given you each a sample complaint compiled by an attorney for your reference. It is the only legal way to stop this devastation while Fred Meyers is still open. Then all facts can be gathered through the discovery process, which will clearly demonstrate Kroger's anti-competitive actions. When I happen to be at Fred Meyer in Mill Creek and One Hundred and Sixty-Fourth, it is quite obvious they receive better quality produce than Evergreen Way, and this has been confirmed to me by employees. Also, Mill Creek and One Hundred and Sixty-Fourth Street location in Everett have been updated. Evergreen has not been kept to the same standard, and now Kroger claims the neglected store is less profitable. I shop at Everett, and it is busy. This is corporate neglect, as you council members stated in the Herald. Fred Meyer was also dishonest in their reasons for closing this location, stating increased in theft while the opposite was proven. Saving Fred Meyer can't happen. The right steps have to be taken quickly, which I talked to Cassie Franklin's office today, and they have forwarded this information to their city attorneys. This would be a big win for the city of Everett. Please step up and take action. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary, if you could please come to the podium. And please state your full name and city residence. You have five minutes to speak.
Hi, Mary Rollins, city of Everett. Thank you for what you had to say. And what I have to say also involves work by the city attorneys. I'm speaking on behalf of One Voice Snohomish County, and the signers for this letter are the head of Snohomish County Branch of the NAACP, the president, the founder and director of Snohomish County Indivisible, and myself as co-lead for Three Fifty Everett. Mayor Franklin, who's not here, Council President Schwab, and council members. Human life is inseparable from the natural world that sustains us alongside every other being. That's from cell death rights of nature. A recent win for the Snohomish River watershed within Everett Initiative Two Four Oh Three was passed with the overwhelming support of Everett residents in November, two thousand and twenty-four. Now this win is in danger of being overturned in court because a lawsuit has been filed by powerful and well-funded opponents. The people of Everett deserve representation against this challenge. Our vote means nothing when anyone with enough money can undo the will of the residents of our community. Legal standing allows residents to hold malefactors accountable and ensures that harm can be addressed before it becomes irreversible. The law enables residents, scientists, educators, and community members to act as watchdogs for the watershed. Humans with the ongoing push from industry are continuing to harm the very world that we inhabit. We do not have a planet B. If we continue on our current path, there is no recovery. With One Hundred and Twenty Four Oh Three, the citizens of Everett came out in force to say enough. We have since learned that the city attorney has expressed a legal opinion in opposition to defending One Twenty Four Oh Three. To this, we respond that it is inadequate for our elected leadership to rely solely on the city attorney's staff for legal opinions, especially when that opinion encourages a refusal to defend a voter-approved initiative. The city attorney's refusal may reflect a limited or conflicted interpretation of the law rather than the will of the people or the broader interests of the community. In cases such as this, the mayor and council have a duty to seek independent legal counsel. This council should have expertise in relevant specialized areas of the law to ensure that the democratically expressed intent of the voters receives a fair and competent defense. Relying solely on the city attorney's staff under these circumstances undermines public trust and weakens the principle of representative governance. To give the watershed within our borders the right to be a clean living ecosystem without harm caused by government or industry is prudent and righteous. The law ensures the development will follow environmental safeguards. It prevents loopholes from being exploited. Further, One Twenty Four Oh Three gives communities the legal authority to protect their natural resources directly. When we continue to distress our natural world, the voices of people who advocate for the rights of nature will grow more insistent. We have the opportunity to be champions for a vibrant, healthy, natural environment. With respect, we ask you to support the mechanisms that allow the public to enforce environmental protection without relying solely on governmental agencies, empower the community by recognizing that citizens have the power to enact and enforce local environmental protections, and assist Everett residents to balance growth with protecting the health of our environment. Please support the citizen voters and protect both our vote and the watershed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And then the remaining individuals would like to wait till we get to item number five.
Okay, thank you very much. Right, so we'll move on to council comments, and we'll begin with Councilmember Bader.
No report, no comment. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Ryan?
Thanks. Thank you so much to our commenters. Karen, I completely agree. Thank you for your comments this evening, and it's definitely something that I'm focused on. I know where the council members are too, so appreciate your advocacy and thank you for being here. And thank you, Mary, as well for your words. I appreciate that. Let's see. For my update, this week I attended the Port Gardner Neighborhood Association meeting, and we had two representatives from the Salvation Army who operate the food bank over at Twenty Five Twenty Five Rucker, and they shared about how they're gearing up for the holiday giving season and adopt a family and how they need volunteers for both the food bank and for their holiday season. Port Gardner also shared that they need volunteers to plan the upcoming holiday party and for the neighborhood Christmas lights competition. And I wanted to share a reminder that boards and commissions applications are due October twentieth, and there's opportunities from, I believe, the animal shelter to the lodging tax advisory committee and all sorts of great ways to plug in. And the Everstation District Alliance has a fall cleanup this Saturday starting at nine AM, which is also volunteer opportunities. So when I was thinking about giving this update today, I was thinking about there's a common thread through all of these of just the need for people to step up and volunteer and get engaged with their community like everybody here is doing tonight. And I know times are really tough right now. I get it. It's easy to turn inward and shut down and shut things out, but now is also the perfect time to get more engaged in our community and get engaged with Everett, because I don't think we're going to make it through the next few years without community members stepping up and stepping out to just make sure that our beloved Everett is lifted up during these next few years. So I encourage people to please get involved in your community with a neighbor, with a local group of some type, or with the city. Happy to spitball ideas with the people if they aren't quite sure where to plug in, but just really want to, you know, advocate for folks to volunteer and get involved. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Vogely?
Good evening. I just want to say thank you for being here and speaking your truths, and I'm gonna save some truth for another time, but I have some. That is all. Thank you.
Councilmember Fosse?
Second, my colleagues' comments, and thank you to all the public speakers. Saturday, I was able to attend the ribbon-cutting ceremony for first Latino art exhibition in Everett at the Letty Center. That's the Latino Educational Training Institute. If you haven't had a chance to visit and look them up, it's a pretty spectacular place, and it was some really, really amazing artists and artwork. Then yesterday, I had a really uplifting, wonderful, much-needed experience. I got to go be a principal for the day at Everett High School. Yeah, it was really, it was a lot of fun. And it's, it was actually, I learned a lot. You know, you go into the principal's office, and you sit there, and you get those flashbacks into like, you know, back in the day of like getting in trouble and having to go to the principal's office. But it's not like that. I got to shadow them around, and they have this amazing coffee shop helping folks like learn all of these job skills. And then just how community and student-centered the work they do is, it was exactly what I needed after a tough couple of weeks, and I just left that experience just glowing inside, and it was kind of just refilled my soul a little bit. They really are all of these folks that are working for our students and thinking of them and going above and beyond, just, you know, heroes in our community. I just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Councilmember Tui?
Yeah, just want to thank our speakers tonight. Really appreciate your words. Thank you. Give us lots to think about. Just want to remind her that tomorrow evening at six thirty at Apex, the Monte Cristo Awards will take place. So hopefully, we have lots of folks to attend. That's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Zarlingo?
Just a couple of things. I am serving on Snohomish County tomorrow's exploratory committee. I serve as an Everett representative for the main Snohomish County tomorrow organization, but also in this exploratory committee that's taking a renewed look at the activities and priorities of the committee. Mostly, it's been centered around housing and growth. There'll be more to report on that on the next Snohomish County tomorrow meeting, where the recommendations of this exploratory committee will start to be rolled out, and then they'll be discussed more fully at the General Assembly meeting in December. So more on that later. And then one other item, last week attended with Council President Schwab, the Everett Chambers Building and Trades Mixer, where we heard from a principal at Bailey Construction, the constructor for our outdoor events facility, especially including local business and labor and especially workforce development. I think it was Hans Hansen of Bailey Construction. Really some neat opportunities, especially because they're going to be focusing heavily on local companies, local hiring, local workers, workforce development for those people. That's something that is in short supply. The Project Labor Agreement will promote workforce development and safety, and again, local hiring and local training. So that's really good. The event was sold out. Lots of locals there, met some people I hadn't before. And, you know, encouragingly, people who want to build their businesses and careers here. If there was one downside of it, it was one of the contractors described some difficulty in sometimes gaining employees here, a little less likely to hire on to some of the local companies because it's so expensive to live here. So that circles back to our constant focus on trying to increase housing. We've got to solve the supply-demand problem. None of the rest of the measures we have will be adequate if we don't do that. So anyway, mostly encouraging, some cautionary tales, but a really good event.
Thank you, and thank you, Karen and Mary, for your presentations. Really appreciate it. I attended the South Forest Park Neighborhood Group, and it was a sobering reminder of the conflicting issue of maintaining our city's services and our taxes. And so, moving with the continuing theme that we've had, not only in our surveys, but also in our town hall meetings, is that there's a significant amount of residents don't want either. They don't want to cut in service, and they don't want to pay more in taxes. So it was a reminder of next year's budget, because I think we're going to be in a pretty good position, at least to balance this upcoming year's budget, but two thousand and twenty-seven. It's a little sobering thought last night as we had that discussion. So thank you for that. Okay, so we'll move on to our consent items, and we have three.
Council President, do we have an administrative update or city attorney?
You know, I'm just ready to plow through here. There must be. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Bader, for keeping me on track today, too. Do we have administrative update?
Yes, I just have a couple of things.
Fantastic.
First, the mayor is sorry to not be here. She's at a regional leadership conference. That's with leaders from throughout Puget Sound. It's focused on collaboration and economic opportunity with both public and private sector regional leaders. She'll be back next week to deliver her budget message. Staff are following up with a commenter from last week who talked to you about D V, the Autism Community Judicial Protection Orders, kind of a, she had a bunch of issues that she mentioned, so we are following up. And the Parks and Built Environment Committee, you guys heard, I think, last week after their meeting, they're kind of delving into the issues of vacancies and vacant businesses. Staff have reached out to Downtown Everett Association to get their information and kind of, I guess, sync up our information about current vacancy rate and trend lines, comparisons with other Main Streets and downtown organizations. So we're working on that for the committee. And yeah, I guess that's just those three things. Thanks.
Thank you. How about from our city attorney's office?
No comment and no executive session.
Thank you. All right, now moving on to consent items. We have three, because we're removing one for next week. So we have consent items, one, two, and four is their motion.
Councilmember Ryan moves approval of consent agenda items one, two, and four.
Seconded.
Okay. Any quick questions? CNN Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely.
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse.
Yes.
Councilmember Tui.
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes. Okay, moving on to proposed action items. Item number five has been read into the record, Council Bill Two Five Zero Nine Dash Five Three. Is there anything from admin or any presentation or any new updated information? Okay, are there any comments or questions from council? Oh, we do have a public comment on this one? Okay, let's hear from the public first.
Okay, first, if Liz could please come to the podium, and state your full name and city residence, and you have three minutes to speak.
Okay. Liz Stanning, city of Lake Forest Park. Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me. I'm here on behalf of the Downtown Everett Association, and I'd like to express support for extending the buffer zone ordinance. It's been proving to be an effective tool and helping our vibrant downtown, supporting downtown businesses, visitors, residents, and also those in need. We've seen some meaningful improvements downtown recently. Some reports from our cleaning crews are they're seeing fewer incidents of trash and biohazards. Specifically, I want to point out around the Everpark Garage and the adjacent walkway that you travel from through the alley to the breezeway and onto Colby Avenue. It's feeling more inviting and secure, and also easier for our crew to navigate. And also with the more recent addition of the buffer zone around the Imagine Children's Museum, this area has also been benefiting. We're hearing there's less negative disruptions, and it's making it safer for families and children. And I regularly meet with staff from the community development team and E P D. We're hearing that there is ongoing communication between law enforcement and social workers. It's now, and you probably know about this, it's now more common for social workers to actually listen in on emergency calls, and they can help determine whether they can assist people with services rather than deploy patrols. I find that really encouraging. So this approach of connecting E P D and social workers is effective in combining that enforcement with compassion. One aspect of the ordinance does require a right-of-way-use permit for food supply distribution events. I think you're probably all aware of that aspect. It does create more coordination with the community development team and event organizers. There's a lot more synergy and connection with city staff and with those organizers. It's also greatly helping reduce the impacts of trash in the area that our crews see. So the one change, the ordinance, more frequent reporting, I think is a really good move. We would really like to hear more about the ordinance and how it's working and know more about when things are changing. And I just want to report just really briefly that on the way here, I stopped by the Everpark Garage and talked to one of our employees who works in the evenings, and I told him where I was going and what I was doing. He's like, wait, what? It's gonna expire? He was a little confused, and he said personally, it's been really helpful for him, working in the evenings and working around the garage and the alleys and all the sidewalks. And so I think it's benefiting a lot of people, and I'm really hopeful that those folks are also getting the services that they need. So I just want to conclude, and thank you for your commitment to Everett and downtown. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, if Charles could come to the podium. Charles, followed by Scott, and please state your full name and city residence. You have three minutes to speak.
Charles McMarion, resident of Everett. His councilmember Ben has the unfortunate circumstance. I'm in his district. Like the previous speaker, I believe this ordinance is very important to help. And the reason I showed up tonight is I saw some emails come out from an individual saying he was against it, and also is that some stuff in the newspaper was saying, made the mistake of reading the newspaper, the online newspaper, and it was talking about some people saying it's just a Band-Aid. It doesn't solve the problem. Well, police officers and E M Ts, firefighters, or first responders is that when they come to a scene, the E M T or the paramedic is going to use a Band-Aid or tourniquet to address the emergency need of that person then, and then hopefully that person will follow up with appropriate medical care. This ordinance allows those first responders to get there and address the circumstance that is, needs to be addressed. The people that have this problem suffer from a great deal of problems, and they're going to have a large amount of ambivalence or resistance to addressing their homelessness and their drug problems. I feel that this, is this ordinance a comprehensive solution? No. But it's definitively needed, and just like you passed your consent agenda unanimously, I'm asking y'all to show the city and the population to pass this ordinance unanimously because it addresses the problem at a first step, but it is not a comprehensive solution. Just like the firemen, when they come put the fire out at the home of the business, don't rebuild the business. That same day, it starts the process. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Scott, if you could please come to the podium, followed by Brian. Please state your full name and city residence. You have three minutes to speak.
My name's Scott Sparling, from Everett, District One. I'm here to speak against amendments to Three Nine Five Seven Dash Two Three. And I'm just rhetorically asking, who has no sit and no lie? I prefer to call it that rather than Orwellian-cloaked moniker, service facility buffer zone. Anyhow, I ask who hasn't materially helped, and whose service is it concerned with? And who has arbitrary boundary drawn on our streets, our streets, all residents' streets? Who hasn't materially harmed, and to whose benefit? And while enforcement by E P D may be selective, when we start to see ICE and National Guard in large numbers, it'll just be one more tool in their tool belt for larger sweeps. When we're seeing massive crackdowns on free speech and other civil liberties, the last thing we need is more crackdowns by our locals. Mayor Harrell in Seattle is doing great stuff to try to prevent crackdowns. I talk and walk with many folks, say, around Clark Park who are homeless. A great many, there are, a great many of them have no ambivalence about trying to get off the streets and trying to work. There just is not all that many services available. There are some, I have seen. I've seen some taking advantage. A few have told me that there are some services, but especially as it gets colder, I know that's a separate thing. It's going to be different. As far as shelters, it'll be different. Anyhow, I've heard rumors of adding Clark Park to the zone, and I think that would be just kind of cruel. Parks are for people. Including Clark Park would effectively criminalize certain people's being and routines, and I live within sight of the park. I see a lot of trash in the park, but it's primarily high school students. My wife's actually been documenting it and in touch with Principal Shepherd at the high school. It's mostly wrappers and milk cartons and crap from their cafeterias. Anyhow, just wanted to put my two cents in. Thank you.
Thank you. And Brian, if you could come to the podium? Thank you. And Brian, if you could come to the podium. Please state your full name and city residence. You have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. My name's Brian Partington. I live in Everett, Washington. I live across the street from Andy's Place in the buffer zone for that area. And I, I want to speak to its effectiveness or lack of effectiveness or the unclear nature of its effectiveness. I have concerns about the buffer zone because while it, there has been a correlated decrease in police or emergency services calls from our area, it does seem to be mostly in line with citywide decreases. I'm also concerned about things like whether we actually have the ability to monitor the second order effects of this policy. For example, late last year, there was an encampment by Airport Road that got run over by a car. Now, I don't know if a buffer zone pushed those people to live in or sleep in that particular area, but if it did, that's, I think, a worse effect than me having some more trash on my sidewalk. Also, on my sidewalk before the buffer zone, someone overdosed and was saved by being administered Narcan by the other people on the street, likely drug users, but I don't need to make that assumption. But anyway, they saved his life, and I'm not sure that happens when it, when people are more distributed. Of course, when there's other problems with people congregating, it can encourage harmful behavior. So I, I, I get that, but I, I do worry about the expanding nature of these buffer zones, especially if they're so easily implemented by the mayor's office without consent from the council. There's already people asking for expanded buffer zones, and I'm worried that we will get to a point where we are not illegal, not legally allowed to expand the buffer zones any further, and then it will be a kind of a jockeying between neighborhoods to see who can have the policy implemented, where a more comprehensive citywide, but still constitutional, policy and assistance might be more effective and also legal and sustainable. Thank you.
Thank you, and that concludes public comments.
Okay, we got everyone? Is there anyone here that's in, that just came in that would like to speak? All right, so. Pardon? I just speak. I don't, any matter? Hang on for a minute. Could you state your name and city residence, and you got three minutes? No, up here at the mic. I'm on up here at the mic. I just wanted just to wait until, okay. Go ahead.
I'm going to write it up, and I'm going to come back, because I'm not happy. Your, your, your officers harass and arrest me, bully dogs.
Council President.
Sir, sir, please don't. Listen to me. I gave you the opportunity to speak. Please be respectful and kind to people in the, in the room. I, I gave you the preference without signing up and going the rules, and I'm asking you to just be respectful and polite.
How can I?
Okay, I, I'm just going to really out order. We'll see you in the next meeting. Thank you. All right. Okay, moving on. We had item number five. We had the second reading. We've had council, or community comment. Is there any questions or comment from city council? Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you. I, last week I had requested information about changes in service calls outside of the buffer zones. So I was hoping to get that information. Curiosity I've been having and pondering the last week or so is if, so I know, you know, we've heard the data that crimes across the city have, the crime rates been decreasing over the last few years. So I've been curious if the, these rates within buffer zones is reflective of the overall trend in the city of crimes reducing, so. Yes, some data about activities outside of the zone, I think, would be helpful.
Okay, I'll follow up. I knew that you wanted the, that we had percentages and you wanted numbers, but maybe I missed this other piece of your question, so I'll add that to the list.
Right.
I'd like to add to the idea of dispersment. I, I had a question last week about that, and it seemed to be addressed a little bit in the Riverside neighborhood, but also the Forest Park area has, has had some discussions about dispersment because of the, the buffer zones into that area. So if we could have a couple more statements or a little more research on that, it'd be great. Thanks. Councilmember Vogely.
Thank you for coming in and speaking your truth about this as well. Let's see, I am glad that somebody mentioned Andy's Place because there is no sit, no lie around Andy's Place. And that is one of the issues that we are constantly talking about here at council and what's going on over in the area, and who's supposed to be there, and who's supposed to help, and who's doing what. So I would just like to mention that maybe this, these buffer zones, no sit, no lies, don't actually work everywhere. And also, I really liked the band, I'm sure that, like I said, the Band-Aid thing in the, the newspaper possibly, and I just wanted, that was a really interesting way of, of, of bringing it back. So just good job on your comments. I still disagree, kind of, because it is a Band-Aid, but I understand where you're coming from. And even with Band-Aids and housing, there's not, there are not places for people to go once they have been moved on from these buffer zones. So like one commenter said, there was people, there are people staying on airport. There are people in multiple pockets of city property or behind apartment buildings. Like, we hear about it all the time because a lot of people want the police to go, get those people out of the bushes and out of the grass and out of their tents, and there's still nowhere to go. So buffered zones just push them to the outlying places, and there's not enough money. Well, there is enough money in this world, but it's not coming into the city of Everett in order to create actual working systems, much like redlining pushed out all sorts of people that weren't white, and that was legal, and it's not legal anymore. Buffer zones are an awful lot like this, and I'm looking at like the proposed soda amendment, which isn't the buffer zone, but it's another type of zone. And I just want to reiterate that it does clean trash, like literal pieces of garbage off the street, but it's not helping the people that need it the most. I'm, I'm, I can see the benefits. I can see the benefits downtown. But I can also see that there are multiple people not being benefited by this, and so. That is what I have to say.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or comments from council one? Item number five. Councilmember Zerlingo.
Well, first I'd like to thank the quite numerous comments we've gotten, both in person and a number of them by email, especially detailing their experience, the specifics, what it meant for them. And I guess there are a couple of pieces of this that I, the, as the mayor said last week, the, this is not meant to cure homelessness. It is meant to address the conditions in some of these areas that are helping us enable the businesses operating that are providing the tax revenue, the services that we need for our city. So hurting those resources then hurts us, our ability to do other things and to help with our outreach and things like care. And, and last, I think it's worth noting that, as Ms. Stanning said of the Downtown Everett Association, I'm not sure everyone understands, this is a group that is, in addition to paying all the taxes that they do, they are taxing themselves separately as a district to provide some resources to help keep things as safe and, and reasonable for customers and residents as they can. So I don't claim this is a fix, but I appreciate the specific feedback, and I think it's worth understanding that, that so many people here are trying and really spending both time and money and energy to, to move this forward and to help generate the resources that'll help us address these problems.
Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Ryan.
Thanks, I did have one more. I've been curious, too, about, I was grateful to hear the numbers and statistics about touchpoints with our social workers and offers to provide service. But that happens even if it isn't in a buffer zone, right? If the, if there's a call for a person needing assistance, a social worker can still show up and provide referrals, even if they're not in a buffer zone, right?
I think the buffer zone adds the additional impetus and tool to, I mean, the mayor spoke to this last week, that it, it does sort of push the problem along, but that, that doesn't exist if there isn't a buffer zone. So resources can be provided, but if, if folks aren't interested, they can remain where they are.
I'll try, I'll rephrase. I don't think I was clear. So the, if a, if there's a call for a person sitting or lying in a buffer zone or not in a buffer zone, it doesn't matter if there's a buffer zone, a social worker is still able to provide referrals and services even if they're not in a buffer zone.
Yes.
So it's not that social workers are only showing up to calls in a buffer zone to provide referrals.
Absolutely. You're right. They, they'll, they are providing that service regardless.
So I think that's been another sticking point for me is that, that, you know, our social workers are amazing angels and amazing human beings, and they're doing great work, but it's not because of the buffer zone that they are showing up to provide services. Whether or not there is a arbitrary red line drawn, they're still going to be showing up to help. So the service is being provided anyways across the whole city, so I guess that's another struggle I've been trying to grapple with the last week or so.
Okay, any other questions or comments from council? Okay, hearing none. This will be the second reading. Final reading will be October twenty second, two thousand twenty-five. So on to proposed action number six, first reading, Council Bill two five one zero dash five four, adopt a ordinance creating a special improvement project entitled Forty First Street to Rucker Avenue Corridor Phase Two, Fund Three Zero Three, Program One Two Three, and repealing ordinance number three eight six nine dash two two, third and final reading, ten twenty-nine twenty-five. Does council have any questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll go to item number seven, Council Bill two five one zero dash five five, first reading, adopt a ordinance closing a special improvement project entitled Forty First Street to Main Two West, Marineview Drive Corridor Improvements, Fund Three Zero Three, Program Zero Nine One, as established by ordinance number three four six four dash one five, third and final reading, ten twenty-nine twenty-five. Are there any council questions or comments on item number seven? Okay, hearing none, we'll go to action items. Item number eight, Council Bill two five zero nine dash five zero, third and final reading, adopt a ordinance creating a special improvement project entitled Lift Station Number Twenty Four, Conveyance Improvements Fund Three Three Six, Program Zero Five Zero. Is there a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, motion and, and seconds made. Is there any questions or comments from council? Okay, CNN clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely.
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse.
Yes.
Councilmember Tui.
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes. Council, action item number nine, Council Bill two five zero nine dash five one, third and final reading, adopt a ordinance amending ordinance number four zero one zero dash twenty-four entitled Walter E. Hall Park Community Connections Path, Fund Three Five Four, Program Zero Nine Four, to accumulate all costs for the project. Is there, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, motion, seconds are made. Do I have any questions or comments from council? Okay, hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely.
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse.
Yes.
Councilmember Tui.
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes. Okay, moving to item number ten, third and final reading, Council Bill two five zero nine dash five two, adopt a ordinance creating a special improvement project entitled R R F B Pedestrian Safety, Fund Three Zero Three, Program One Three Four, to accumulate, eliminate all costs for the improvement. Do I have a motion?
Councilmember Bader, so moves.
Second.
Okay, council comments or questions for item number ten? Okay, CNN clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely.
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse.
Yes.
Councilmember Tui.
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes. And so with no further business, we are now adjourned.